Okay, good evening. I'm here to talk tonight about Board Goal 2.5 reconfiguration. Board Goal 2.5 is to evaluate elementary, intermediate, and middle school configurations to determine if reorganization would lead to increased student achievement and efficiency, and determine the most appropriate number of schools at each level. Before we get started, I really think we have accomplished this goal up to the point that we can, kind of leaving it in the board's lap as you're getting ready to prepare for your next five-year cycle. So, a little history about this committee. So, it's really formed over two years and two committees. The first committee was chaired by Renee Scott. That committee started in 2018, and it was really the first aspect of this, of that goal, to evaluate kind of what is the best configuration for our school district. So, really, an in-depth process that they went through. Once that committee stopped their work, the board at the time said, "Okay, now we're going to go a little bit further." Then a second committee was formed. It was chaired by KJ Noel and myself. It started in 2019. Each committee met approximately for one year, so a long in-depth study. There were large committees, over 20 participants, and there was a mixture between community members, staff members, we had board representation on there, and parents as well. Committee members that started on that first group in 2018 were given the option to continue through the second cycle as well, many of which did that. So, committee number one. So, they were tasked with providing the board with the best configuration for a K-8 model. Again, as a first step, before the board could make any decisions, taking what configuration we had at the time, which was the pre-K current configuration, pre-K, K-4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12. And then they did a lot of in-depth studies on that, huge subcommittees. Those subcommittees looked at current configuration, a K-5, 6, 8 configuration, K-6, 7, 8, and then took each one of these disciplines that you see listed below and studied that out on what impact that would have based on those configurations. So, as an example, curriculum and instruction. So, looking at our current, our current information that we had, and then comparing those with the K-5, K-6 model, things like, and you've heard us talk about it a little bit as we've done textbook adoptions and those kinds of things, that split is not always really nice. It doesn't fit necessarily with what we have. So, we might have K-5 with some textbook adoption, and then a 6, 8 textbook adoption. So, they really dug into that with each one of those things. What impact does it have on discipline? Is there any trends in terms of the number of referrals that we have based on those different levels, younger kids with older kids, or vice versa? They did a community study. They sent surveys out, and they got input from our community. If you had a choice, what would that choice be for you? Would you like this configuration or that? They did it also with the staff, and they did it with the students. So, there was three different components to that study, and they gathered input around each one of those things. They looked at graduation rate, comparing schools like us across the nation, like us in the state of Kansas, to see was there any impact with graduation rate based on these configurations. They looked at the social-emotional issues. Many of that had to do with transitions. There is some research about cutting down on the number of transitions that you have, and what a benefit that is to kids. And then lastly, state assessment data, and just again, comparing is there any impact or change, noticeable change, based on that information? So, at the end of that year, each one of those committees, again, kind of broke that down, and they looked at curriculum instruction. This is what we have learned out of our research for each one of these things. So, as the curriculum subcommittee, I'm going to say, "We recommend configuration X." Then the same group that's studying discipline, they did that, and so on and so forth through all those different groups. And then collectively, as a whole, they presented to the board to recommend the pre-K, K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12 configuration. So, that after a year was what the committee presented to the board. So, the board at the time then said, "That's great. If we choose to do that, what's next?" So, that's where my committee with KJ started, and our task really was to look at aligning those options, to look at that current configuration or the proposed configuration of K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12. What are the pros and cons for the proposed options, and then what, of course, the costs of each of those options? And then we added something else to that task for that committee. If we were going to go through the work, and if there was any outcome to that, then let's look at safety and security measures for our schools. Primarily, that had to do with two things, tornado shelters, keeping the whole building collectively safe, and then also entrance entrances. Not all of our schools have safe entrances. If you have ever been to Alta Brown, in order to get into Alta Brown, you key in or get buzzed in, and you go into a separate set of doors, and you can't go anywhere else but into the office. And that's not always true with all of our buildings. So, we looked at what would that look like in order to add some more security measures to our schools. And then lastly, again, if we're going to get into this, are there any modifications, updates? Maybe it's facial kinds of things that we can do to make our schools a little more modern. And I think it was in this meeting last time, we talked about just the age of our schools. And so, is there anything like that that we should add in or look at as we go through this process? So, this is the committee that we worked with. Again, you can see fairly large group. Many of those were carryover members that we had come to, to our group as well. And then our, our work really started with research. We knew what the configuration recommendation was, so what were the parameters, or what kinds of impacts would things have with like a two-building option or a three-building option? If we were going to go with two, we knew we were going to have large buildings. Our middle schools were going to get pretty big. So, is there any impact to having too many kids? There's like a sweet spot. Below 500, is, can you go up to 1,000? So, again, we looked across the state of Kansas. What is the typical building size in that kind of middle school level? What do our elementaries typically look like in terms of size? And then we also looked across the nation. And really, the findings behind that were all over the board. You can kind of do any and everything. There was no magic number, if you will, as we went through that. But we studied that out. We looked at impacts on instruction, again, discipline. I talked about ideal size. And then from that, this group went through and reviewed building plans to see for us individually, if we were to add fifth grade to our elementaries as an example, what would that take? Could this particular building handle two more sections or three more sections of that fifth grade? Because we try to keep units the same. It's a two-track school or a three-track school, so that means that they have two teachers at that grade level across the school. So, we, we broke those down with building plans, and then what impacts is that going to have on our kids? Shuffling kids around, of course, boundaries could be an issue at that point. Are there any staff and instructional issues, which I'll bring attention to later in this presentation, but even licensure could become an issue at some times. How are you properly licensed to be in that next level of building? And then cost certainly was a big part of that. So, we had building plans. This is just a, a single example of that, but we went through every single one of our buildings with a map just like this collectively as a group. And we were fortunate enough to have a nice bland or mix of staff members, so sometimes we had to do a little research on our own, getting a hold of building principles, but for the most part, we knew what the makeup of the school was. So, I know that's a little hard to read, but essentially, we went through and we identified, "This is kindergarten room, this is kindergarten room, this bedroom," and we labeled every single one of those rooms, and then start to look at it from a section perspective and say, "Okay, are there any rooms that we could capture, reutilize, and put a fifth grade in there as an example for our elementaries?" So, we did that with everyone. The blue highlighted area there is an addition, 2003, that whole blue section was an addition to that school. So, every one of our maps, our, our blueprints also have that as well, so you can see how many times the building was added on, which part was newer. So, we broke those down for every one of our schools. It led us to kind of the, the finals, if you will, of what our sections are. So, this is too hard to read, so I've given you a hard copy of this information in front of you. So, our current configuration there by building, just take the top line as an example. So, Alta Brown Elementary School, at the time of this study, and remember, this was two years ago. It started in the 1920s school year. So, we had four sections of kindergarten, four of first grade, two of second grade, three of third grade, and three of fourth grade. So, typically, that school at one point started off, it was a four-track school. Then as enrollment changes, lower enrollment, you have bubble groups, that sort of thing, then that defluxed away a little bit, but at the time, that's the sections of our classrooms that we had. So, go to the right-hand side with the revised configuration. For us to make sections work for a fifth grade, we would try to make that a three-track school across the board, and so, by doing so, we, we thought we could pick up three additional classrooms by making it three tracks. So, you're going to gain a classroom with kindergarten, you're going to gain a classroom with first grade, so there's two. They probably had two other classrooms they were using for something. Maybe the art teacher had a classroom, but we thought we could steal that classroom. Or, it could be that part of this construction idea was we were adding classrooms to make this configuration work with this particular school. So, I won't go through all those, but you can go through and look at the current configuration, what was needed, whether it be additional rooms, and we talked about adding classrooms if we needed to. So, kind of low-hanging fruit first. Do they have the space available? If they didn't have the space available, then we worked with Stuart Nelson and Nick Nemechek from the Mancini, I'll get the acronym wrong, Gibson, Mancini, Nelson, and Carmichael. They were great and, and really, really helpful on that committee. But then they helped us look at, "Okay, you don't have enough room here, so we could add a section of classrooms, but they'll also meet like our FEMA requirements for storm shelters, and so we could pick up kind of both, both things at once." And so, we went through each one of those buildings when we did that. So, essentially, once we had that mastered and looking, we really needed to kind of come up with our proposal or our options. We focused on two, having a three-middle school option and a two-middle school option. And these two things were really the basis of our study, on which direction we thought we would go. So, looking at the three-middle school option, we chose Charles Stones, and again, this was just for research purposes, but we Charles, chose Charles Stones as our third repurposed middle school. And the idea behind that was it gave us a middle school on the east side of town, one centrally located perhaps with KH, and one on the west side with Horace Good. So, we could keep relatively the same size of schools. We would then repurpose Bernadine Sitz to be a K-5 elementary school. So, that was one option that we looked at. The second one was to keep two middle schools, and then we would just basically increase the size of KH, and to make it more closely match Horace Good. And in doing so, both Charles Stones and Bernadine Sitz would become elementary schools. And then the last piece here is, talks about à la carte projects with storm shelters, and I'll get to that tool in a minute, which is pretty amazing. So, we went through and looked at the estimated costs for the three-middle school option. So, I will throw out a big caveat here. Number one, that was over two years ago when we came up with those numbers. So, inflation, the costs, all those kinds are going to impact your decision on what you do moving forward. But at the time, at the end of the 20 school year, when we were ready to present this information, pre-COVID, it was going to take about $51 million to go with the three-middle school option. So, you have about 600 to 700 students per building. That keeps all three of those middle schools relatively the same. And then we came up with just anecdotally, with discussions, what are the pros and cons to having the three-middle school options? Again, I won't go through all of those for you, but, but those are the pros that this group, so potentially smaller class size, you know, getting more kids involved, less SES kids in one particular place, so maybe more instruction. All of those are kind of what-if or analogies based on the experts in the room as we went through this process. Cons to having three middle schools, the increased need for qualified staff. So, in a time, again, wasn't quite as bad as it is now with hiring people, but even at that time, would we be able to hire enough secondary licensed staff to fill another building essentially? Not equipped for athletics, Charles Stones would not be, so that would mean more locker rooms, you know, bigger costs. What are you going to do with athletic fields, those kinds of things? We even got to the point where the architects took some drawings for us, and they took a football field, and they could move it around and place it kind of around our property, and what that would look like in relationship to the building itself, if the board decided that's what you wanted to do. Those decisions would have to be made. Do you share a single facility like Memorial? Are you adding these kinds of things? And that's where this à la carte project really comes in handy. So, again, I won't take the time to go through those, but that gives you a ballpark on the estimated cost for the three-middle school option. Changing gears to the two-middle school options, so we would increase the size of KH. Horace Good would need a little work done. They're much bigger capacity-wise than KH is. So, you would be in the ballpark between 800 and 1,000 students per building. Estimated cost at the time was $54 million, and then it would create some excess capacity. This, this particular option will have the more, more space available for the board to use for other reasons than the three-middle school option. The reason for that, you have Bernadine Sitz, and you have Charles Stones as two of our larger facilities that we have kind of in that elementary track. Now, you've just changed those to two of the biggest elementary schools that we have in our district, size, capacity-wise. So, that would free up a lot of space in different areas to do different things, more so than the other option. Again, pros, the buildings are already middle schools, so already have the needed infrastructure, the gymnasiums, you know, those kinds of things that go along with that upper level. No change to league configurations. That's one thing that one of our administrators pointed out, is the current league already has eight teams in the league, so it's an even number. Makes it easier to schedule by adding a third middle school or another school in the league. That could cause some conflicts, somebody being left out, or lengthening seasons, those kinds of things. Licenseur was not an issue here, but could have been an issue. We didn't explore that, but it could have been an issue when you go to the, the three different middle schools again, is just getting the people properly licensed. With the two middle schools and adding sixth grade, if you're old like I am, we had a K-9 license at the time, so you could have taught middle school whatever. The state really now requires a more specialized license, so even though I'm K-9, I would need a different endorsement to teach at the secondary level and a particular content.
Certainly, at this point, though, we are weaving a lot of those, are we not?
Well, yeah, I mean, we do have, we have to report all of those, that someone's teaching outside of a content area. Yes, we still have to report those, but we have some people teaching outside of content areas. So, the other piece of this that we looked at was remodeling the main offices, like we talked about, secure entrances. We looked at 10 different buildings with an estimated cost, again, two years ago, about $2 million. There were additional classrooms to be added in five buildings. That's where we went through the maps, the blueprints, if you will, and we just couldn't do, we couldn't find space available to add those additional sections. So, five of our buildings would need to have the storm shelter idea maybe added to that in order to address the needs. Eight total rooms in those five different buildings, and that was an estimated cost of about $4 million. So, this is the tool. Again, I know it's super hard to see, but this is the tool that we use as we were working through it, and what the board would have available. It would need updating, obviously, when you get to that point, if you decided to make that decision, but it's really handy. All right, so my glasses are terrible. My eyes are worse, but I'll show you here. So, really what it allows us to do. No, it's not going to let me do it. So, if, if we got into this, if I scroll down, I'll back up to this screen. Okay, so, if we back up to this screen, how this tool works is we have listed out kind of your à la carte package here, if you will. So, at Plaimo, if we wanted to add a music classroom, which would again, double as a storm shelter, you can click on this total if you said, "No, we don't want to do that. We only want to address the security, the, the office security." You click on that, it goes away. You click on the blank button here, it gives you a drop-down menu, and you can select that item, and it'll add the projected total in there for you, which essentially then begins to start your price tag differently. So, you can see the different options for the different schools as we work through those plans, what we were kind of fiddling around with to get to our 50-plus million-dollar proposal. So, that's how those tools work. Okay, so, so it kind of leads us into, the big ticket item is the money, of course. And again, this is old information, but at the time, the status quo for our bond offerings was that our, our, our community impact, our growth was going to stay relatively the same as what it was, 1.5% annually. Bond and interest state aid remained at 56% for the current debt, and then tax collection rate was at 98%. So, that leaves current bonds, they're going to pay out. That's the bond that was approved by the community in 2008 for the high school, and we're set to pay that off in 2034. The debt service mill levy is 7.325, and the current mill levy could be maintained. So, now, if we were going to do something, again, you're making some assumptions here that it's still going to be 1.5% annually, bond and interest rate would remain the same at 56%, the tax collection rate at 98%, bond and interest state aid equal to 24% on the new debt. So, there's a big difference there between that 54% that we got then and the 24% that you see now. Part of that is based on the, the state aid that is available for districts. It's currently set at approximately 24%. That could change for us. There's a bill in legislation right now that would change that, would get us closer to the 50 percentile state aid that we had back in 2008, but currently, it is not that. So, it was going to be at 24, which ultimately would cost the district a lot more money in the meantime, but if that goes through, that, that could be something you guys have to figure in, is if it goes through completely, it gets you back closer to 50%. If not, it's, there's a debt cab involved, and a lot more planning, and we'll have to go into that, which we won't get into right now. So, the $65 million is what we've kind of rounded this up to, $65 million for a bond. Total bond debt would exceed, or extend out to 2043, so that would be our new debt that we would have. And again, this is two years ago. Debt service mill levy would increase approximately 15.5, to 15.5 through 2034. That's when our current debt goes away. So, from, from now until that time, it's 15.5, and then we would pick up that six mills, once our current debt goes away, we get that paid off. Okay? So, this gives you a, a little bit of an idea on what that means. So, over a 20-year debt that we would have with our mills, $65 million debt, over 20 years, it's going to increase our mill levy to 15.5. All right? So, on a home that's $100,000, that's kind of what we typically talk about, that's what our auditors talk to you about when they're giving their reports. So, on that $100,000 home at 15.5 mills, that would increase to $94 a year for our community taxpayers, okay? Over that 20, 20-year life. So, if the state gets their process corrected, and we can get closer to that 50 percentile state aid assistance, same numbers or same factors, 20 years, $65 million, the mill increase would be 13, and so for a $100,000 home, that would be $65, if you can get the additional state aid that, that's currently trying to go through legislation. All right, so what does all that mean? So, the board's getting ready to start your five-year strategic plan. This is just really historical information. The three people that chaired this committee, they're not going to be here to go back and get it. So, it's really just an update for you, giving you some information. This stuff will be available. Obviously, we'd have to be updated, reworked, architects, those kinds of things, if that's something the board wanted to do. You know, looking at our current enrollment, all those things would need to be looked at again, but as you're creating your five-year strategic plan, if that's something you wanted to pursue, those are the factors that you're going to have to kind of weigh through as you go through that, looking at in terms of our facility use moving forward. Dr. Carman, do you have anything to add?
I think just, like, the numbers that are out there, I'm sure you get questions, "Why don't we just make this change? Why don't we just do the reconfiguration?" Well, it realistically can't happen without a significant investment. The, the numbers that Heath gave you, like you mentioned, are a couple of years old. That includes some of the basic à la carte items, but not all of them. So, the reason for the $65 million estimate was, we, we may want to add more à la carte items, but also costs are going up, and so, so there's a, there would be a lot of benefits. We hear requests for childcare space. We hear ideas about putting childcare in our schools. Some of our buildings are aging to the point that it, you know, some of that excess space, it may make sense at some point to, to close a school and repurpose that building completely for something else, maybe with the district, maybe with somebody else. But in order to get there, you would have to make, the community would have to make some significant investment. I think, like Heath said, the work that has been done, you know, a, a lot went into looking at that K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12. Certainly, you can do that again, if you, if you want to pursue that again. Then probably, if you, if, if you get back there or you take that recommendation, the big question is two middle schools or three? The nice thing about the numbers, you see, there, there wasn't a significant difference. One, one of those approaches didn't cost 10 or 20 million dollars more than the other. So, that's maybe really good news, because then it's probably the factors that we should be looking at that really help us make that decision, and that is, you know, what's best for the kids in that school? Not, it, it's not a matter of we're making that choice because, because of dollars. I mean, we want to be sensitive in the costs, but, but that probably isn't a make-or-break amount, and I think there was maybe $3 million difference, which granted is a lot of money, but, but in a facility that you're going to hopefully get 80, 80 years' life out of, you know, that's, that's not a tremendous amount when you spread that over time. So, as he said, we, we want you to have this, three new board members, may not have heard much of this before, so we kind of wanted people to know the history, and then as, as you move forward with what your next five-year strategic plan will be, this may be a priority or it may not, but at least now you have this may be a priority or it may not, but at least now you have the information. We're not asking for any action, we're not recommending a fifty million dollar bond issue here or anything like that. We just want people to understand, in order to do this, it's gonna probably take a bond-level investment, if we really want to change the configuration going forward.
You know, it's so prudent to sort of prepare ourselves for opportunities that may present themselves. And infrastructure development or maintenance or sort of a vision to chase is not a bad idea at all. And that's sort of what you all have provided in going through that process. And, um, it, it makes me also wanna ask, you know, the dumb questions, because I don't know, some of the government infrastructure money that's out there, not, not Spark per se, but others, to what extent there might be opportunities that present themselves for affordable investments, public investments. So that's what I like about what, how, what you all have done and what we've done as a district to position ourselves for this kind of thinking. It's certainly expensive right now, and, and if you've looked at all of the difference in prices from two years ago to now, it's significant. And, but, there's something to be said for some thinking of updating the numbers just to update ourselves for readiness for any opportunities that present. Or, uh, you know, heaven forbid, we have one or two schools where something happens and we've just gotta make some hard decisions, and at least we can have it in a context of a long-term vision.
And Heath mentioned two things you need to keep in mind. There's actually two different laws that apply. There's a bond cap law that was passed, um, oh, it was after our bond in two thousand and eight, and, and I wanna say in the two thousand and fifteen range. And the state will not provide state aid for any bonds over what they were currently doing at that point in time. So as some districts' bond projects retire, and that state aid becomes available, you have to, there's a, there's an order that you have to get in line to make sure that our district would be eligible for a piece of that state aid that's available. So this isn't something that you would wanna talk about in April, and not think about that and just put a bond on the, on the ballot for August. It'll, it'll require some planning ahead. The bond companies are good at that, they know who's talking about bonds, but it's a consideration that, um, there will be a timing issue with that. The other one is the, the amount of state aid, and as Heath explained, the law that was passed in two thousand and fifteen, if, if people remember when we, uh, when we publicized the, the Garden City High School project, it was thirty-six percent. We thought we were gonna get thirty-six percent of that reimbursed, that cost reimbursed from the state. Currently, it's about fifty-four percent, I believe. Because over time, our enrollment changed, our population changed, our poverty levels changed, and that number has went up.
Our number.
Our number locally.
Our overall.
That, that's unique to every district, okay? But in two thousand and fifteen, the state changed the law, and they basically put Fort Leavenworth in the calculation. Well, Fort Leavenworth has very little, almost zero assessed valuation, because it's all federal property. And everything on the base is a, is federal property. So I think there's a Burger King that maybe has some local assessed valuation. It really skews the formula that they use. In addition to that, Fort Leavenworth will never pass a bond issue, because when they build a school, the federal government builds it. So it will never go to their local taxpayers for a project like that. So it really doesn't make any sense to have them included in the, in the formula, in the calculation. What we've been told is, the difference for us is, right now, under the law that's in effect, Garden City would qualify for twenty-four percent of state aid. If Fort Leavenworth comes out of the equation, that goes up to like forty-nine or fifty percent. Well, that, that's a significant difference. That's twice as much that the state would pay in, that, that our local taxpayers would not have to come up with locally in order to make our bond payments. So there's also a timing issue with that. There was legislation out there last year, didn't pass. There's a bill out there this year, it's still alive. There's a lot of people trying to, trying to push that, get that to pass, but it's still a question mark whether or not it will, it will pass or not. So there's a couple of timing issues that will factor into this for the board to think about going forward as well. And so a lot of moving parts to put together if, if ultimately you wanna pursue a project.
You know, one of the things that, that I'm wondering about, I guess, in your presentation, and it's a very good one, thank you for that, is the tool that the team put together here, two years old. Surely it can't take too much cost to update that.
So yeah, that's, complete credit goes to Nick and Stuart Nelson, Nick Nemecheck and Stuart Nelson. They created that for us to be able to play around with it. And that's, that's their tool, and they provided the proposed numbers at the time. If you wanna do secure entrance for this building, click, and there's your magic number, that's the estimate. So, again, I mean, if the board is considering doing that, he could probably tell you, you worked with this group in two thousand and twenty, and so now knowing the forecast of costs, what's the increase from a sixty-five million dollar bond in two thousand and twenty to what the same idea would cost us currently? And he could probably give you a range, but they would be the ones to go through and update that sheet. But it really is a dynamite tool. The, the other great thing about them is they, again, they have the, the drafting knowledge, they can manipulate things, they have ideas of where the storm shelters are, could be placed and tied into the existing building. Uh, I don't know if Stuart's still working or not, but, you know, he's, he's got all of that history. Like, uh, my familiar, it was VO at the time when I was there. It was actually designed that you could have flipped that school and rebuilt a whole nother section in the area that we had at the time. So he has that working knowledge too, of, of all of our facilities.
Well, the point, the question fundamentally is, why wouldn't we? I mean, first of all, do we have the kind of money, in as much sense as it wouldn't take much, to update? And, and then the question to the board would be, do we pull the trigger or not?
I think.
It's a what-if tool that's out of date.
Yeah, I mean, the, the board would have to decide if you're even interested in pursuing that. I mean, again, lots of factors, you know, what is enrollment doing, of course, costs. Isn't something that you're interested in pursuing, but that would be a first step, certainly, to do.
We can, we can talk to them and find out what it would take. And at a minimum, I think, they could probably just apply a, a percentage to the, to the total cost, if, if you wanna really, really ballpark. But if you want them to, to get a little more granular, then I, I don't think it would be incredibly costly.
I, I just came to see it's going to the two to three years. And a couple of resources there are permanently in the Bahamas or whatever. And, and now you, you've gotta really start over from something much, much less.
Stuart did get Nick involved in the process with us, and so that's been valuable. He's on our long-range facilities plan as well, our planning committee.
I wonder if this is something you could look at adding to a, a board retreat to have some more discussion? I'm not sure when we're, having, when our next one would be, but, um, then we'd also need to know what we'd want completed, if we need that before we have that discussion, or if it was something we could just go into more detail.